The meeting law, this meeting of the Dudley Planning Board will be conducted in total or in part by a remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting. Can be found on the town's website at Dudley MA dot gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. Via Facebook Live and or posted link at the Dudley MA dot gov following the meeting. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Alright. So first we have to do a roll call, correct?
Yes.
Alright, so Richard Clark. Alright, Steve Wetroba.
Here.
Guy Horn.
Here.
Bill the page.
Here.
Alright. And myself, Daniel Edmiston is present. We also have with us the town planner. You're here? And Michelle, you're here as well, correct? Alright, all present. First order of business. Taking care of the minutes from last meeting, anybody had a chance to read those? Got to get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve the minutes provided for November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting.
I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the last meeting as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have to go through roll call vote. Richard?
Aye.
Bill? Bill, how do you vote? You got, okay, we have a confirmation hand up, Guy?
Yes.
Alright, and Steve?
Yes.
And myself, alright, accepted unanimously. Next on our agenda, we don't have any A and R plans, correct, Bill?
Correct.
Alright, we have a request for a minor modification of the Lyons Estates definitive subdivision plan. To reduce the number of overhead lights from six to one at the entrance onto Lyons Road. Do you want to read that letter, Bill? The email or do you just want to?
Uh, yes, let me pull it up, Dan.
Okay.
I'm hearing voices or something in the background. Is that anyone else having the same thing?
There are definitely voices in the background, correct?
There it is, Dan.
Alright. So this is from Mr. Tom Rovain, who is on this tonight. Good afternoon, Bill. After looking at the proposed streetlights on Truman Drive. Only one light would be necessary mounted on the existing pole at the corner of Lyons and Truman. There is only one other streetlight about two hundred feet from our entryway down Lyons Road. The neighborhood just before ours has no streetlights, not even at the entryway, so we don't want our neighborhood to look like. Not to mention the cost for the town to maintain all these lights. I'm requesting to be placed on the agenda for the November, excuse me, December ninth meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Okay. Mr. Rovain, anything you want to add to that or is that just?
That's pretty much it. Can you all hear me out there?
Yes.
Okay, great. How are you all doing? It's just a request. I had met Mass Electric, uh, National Grid up there. We went over and looked at all the, uh, the original plan called for six streetlights throughout the whole subdivision. Uh, which seems excessive for the area on a, on a fourteen hundred square, uh, mill foot road. Uh, there's no streetlights in the entire area. Eisenhower Road has no streetlights. And there's only one streetlight about two hundred feet down from the entryway to Lyons Estates. Uh, that's on a pole that's down there. My concern was, you know, there's a couple of things when you're approving a plan, which this plan was approved years and years ago. Redone, as you all know, is the board. Um, we took it over. We're developing. We're at the point now where just about ready for pavement. We're going to hold off until the spring. Just to make sure that the road is, is adequate to a frost and thaw, um, to make it a better road for, for years to come. But having six streetlights on the road that's important in an area where there's no streetlights around. And that's why I had made that comment, you know, I don't want it to make it look like a Walmart parking lot. Because it's very dark, it's very, uh, it's a night, it's gonna be a nice neighborhood, just like the neighborhood on Eisenhower Drive. We were thinking if we put one streetlight, this was under the agreement with, uh, National Grid. And myself, we talked, they said we could put a streetlight right at the existing pole from Lyons Street. That would be adequate to light up the intersection, which is probably the most dangerous section. Pulling in, pulling out, there's only eighteen homes in the subdivision, so it's not a busy area. Uh, so I think lighting up the intersection would be beneficial because there are no lights on Lyons Road. From pretty much the courthouse all the way down past our subdivision. So putting another. Would be great for light in our subdivision. I don't think it's necessary, not to mention the, um, the added cost of, um. The, the cost of the town to run those streetlights from years to come. I don't know if that was calculated in the budget, the, the town budget to, to run six streetlights. Um, over the next, you know, how many years that the subdivision will be there? So I think it'd be more financially beneficial to the town to have one streetlight at the end and, uh, not. Light up the whole, because every house that we're going to build, our price range is, is, is four to five hundred thousand dollar homes. Each house is probably gonna have. A, you know, a light post at the end of the driveway or a light up and it's gonna be, we don't want light pollution in a neighborhood that has natural light. Uh, from all these homes. And I think it would be more beneficial. Don't want some neighborhood that looks like they're living in a parking lot. So that was my concern for the neighborhood and the beneficial factor of the town of the, the, the added expense to the, uh. Added streetlight, that many streetlights when there's none already there. So that, that was my request and I, I hope the town appreciates my concern and I'm asking the, the board to, to, uh, agree to put maybe one streetlight at. The end of the subdivision on the existing pole to light up the intersection to make it safe for pulling in and out of the subdivision. That's my request. That's my, that's what I.
Mr. Chairman.
Richard has a question.
I do. I have a couple of comments actually, as I, the board members may believe that we have streets, sidewalks in that development.
On one side going. And yes, this side.
Right. And the board is, there was some discussion at length, in fact, with Mr. Perrin on the board at the time regarding ADA compliant fire, uh, side driveways rather. So that people would be able to. Those sidewalks.
Correct.
If I look at the comment, I think the side driveway sidewalks and no lights. And it seems to me that there's, uh, an issue here. I know that the probability of people putting up lights at the end of their driveway is a. Thing, but that's no doubt. As far as the adequacy of those lights, there's obviously no control over that at all. Uh, I don't think that that's adequate. I think there's a significant difference in it, as I recall, at Eisenhower, there are no sidewalks. So that seeks against perhaps the need for the streetlights in that area, but again, we went to the. Went with, with kind, with the proposal originally and we're adamant that we wanted sidewalks. And Mr. Perrin made a very good case for the ADA driveways. There's a good part of the day that those actually would not be accessible to people if there wasn't school or home being there.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, did a site visit on Monday night about four thirty in the afternoon and, uh, parked up near the heavier. There and I walked down all the way to the cul-de-sac. At that time of day, it was already, as Mr. Clark mentioned, it was already starting to get, I would call it dusk. And, uh, you know, that's a pretty, you really get a, if you walk it, you really get a feel for how long that road is down to the cul-de-sac. And, um, personally, I, I would not support elimination of all the streetlights. In my mind, especially at the cul-de-sac at the very end, I would think that you'd want a light at the cul-de-sac at the very end. Um. Up, up near the road intersection where Mr. Rovain is talking about, obviously. One at the cul-de-sac is what I was thinking and then possibly one halfway. So I'd be, I'd be in favor of just throwing this out there. Uh, reduction from, what was it originally, six proposed to, uh, three? But, uh, as far as from six to one, no, because I mean, that cul-de-sac is a good example of, uh, something that should be lit. I think that your homeowners down there might appreciate that being lit, because, you know, you go into neighborhoods with cul-de-sacs, if there's kids. That's gonna be where the kids are hanging out at night. They're gonna be playing there. They're gonna, you know, a lot of times they'll put a portable basketball hoop up and something like that. And that's all the more reason why there should be a light down there. Just my personal opinion.
If I'm sorry to interrupt, but I agree with this, Wetroba, and the light in his section is not gonna bring any value to those people at the end of the cul-de-sac. It's my look at the site plan heading going up there earlier today.
Well, you know, I, I mean, I, I agree with you on that. I mean, I, uh, I've lived at the end of a cul-de-sac and I understand where you're coming from. We're just trying to get a, a reasonable, um, agreement with the town to make it, um, adequate for the, you know, we want to make it nice for our, uh. People buying in there that are gonna be living in there. So I think one, you know, we're, we're looking at next door at Eisenhower, there's nothing. Have you ever had a complaint? You've never had a call? You've never had anything on any complaints about that?
But if I was on the board at the time when Eisenhower came before the board, I, I probably would have brought, brought that up and probably asked.
I don't think we could say that because somebody else doesn't have it. We shouldn't have it here.
No, no, I agree.
Green door plumbing and we're gonna dispense with it there as well. I mean, uh, that's a suspicious argument at best.
No, I just say, I, I agree. And I, you know what? A light at the end of the cul-de-sac is, is, I agree with you. It's probably a nice thing. They'll light up the cul-de-sac. I've lived, I grew up with, my kids grew up at the end of a cul-de-sac and you're right, they go out on the street. It's kind of a nice thing. Um, you know, we, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to anything. I'm just saying, you know, trying to eliminate making it look like a big parking lot because there's no light pollution up there. And now we're gonna have six streetlights proposed that are there. That's, that's, to me, is too much light pollution. So maybe one at the beginning, one at the end, so you can identify the end. Um, you know, that works. I'm, I'm happy with that.
How about the other planning board members? Any comments, Bill? Any, any put?
Um. Without, without seeing the street, I mean, it's had to, it's had to stay offhand, but from what Steve's saying, it is a pretty good distance, so. I think I'd, uh. Be in favor with Steve's recommendation of six to three.
Guy, I would agree. I mean, I live on a six hundred foot long cul-de-sac and there's one, there's one light at the end of the cul-de-sac and there's one light at the beginning of the street. And six hundred feet, that seems to be okay. Um, but this, this is a fourteen hundred foot long cul-de-sac. I think one at each end and one in the middle should be, should be adequate. I'd go with three.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I was just thinking back to an article that the chief of police wrote in the paper. I think recently there had been some break-ins of vehicles. And, uh, the, the, it was pointed out that the best thing to do against any kind of thievery is to have well-lit. Have everything well-lit. He didn't specifically say streets versus, uh, houses and lots. Obviously, it's up to each homeowner to kind of take care of their own driveway and around their house. But, um, you know, same from experience, I live on a dead end road as well. I've got one streetlight at the top of the hill. If it wasn't for myself and one of my neighbors lighting up the beginning of the subdivision, it'd be pitch black going up here. So I also think that, um, that one is, is, is not enough and that three sounds like it might be a, a good middle ground. Um, Mr. Rovain, would you be in agreement with the planning board is kind of leaning in that direction?
Absolutely. I think, you know, that's, I was thinking that, you know, just like, I'm not sure, I'm just looking what's in the area. Kind of make sure we don't stand out. I don't want to make like, I, I don't want to make it look like a parking lot, but I agree with you. I think at the end of the cul-de-sac. Kind of lighting up. It is a long road. It is a dark area. So it would be nice for safety reasons for making people, you know, feel comfortable living in there.
Yep.
We don't want bright lights. It's a, it's a family neighborhood. We don't want a lot of streetlights shining in on, on bedrooms, because there's gonna be colonials. Where lights will be in the front. People don't want to go to bed and have a bright streetlight out, but yet we want to make sure that it's, it's light enough for, for people to feel safe. So I'm comfortable with three.
Okay, so the planning board's okay. Does it have any more questions? Uh, I can entertain a motion on this.
Chairman, I would move that we approve a minor modification for Lyons Estates definitive subdivision plan to reduce the number of overhead lights from six to three.
I'd have a motion to reduce the number of streetlights in Lyons Estates from six to three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Bill. Okay, has to go roll call vote once again. Richard?
Aye.
Alright, Steve?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Alright, we are unanimous.
Great.
Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, board. Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, item four. Review draft special permit and major site plan approval decision with conditions for an adult use cannabis cultivation, manufacturing and retail establishment at thirty-five, thirty-seven Chase Avenue. Do you want to pull those up and show the screen, Bill, or how do you want to proceed?
I'll pull up the draft decision, Dan, so we can talk about it. There it is. Uh, I just made one change. Uh, Nick told me that the, uh, property has changed ownership. So this is the now official owner, Rudy Organic, Inc. Other than that, I, I sent you the draft. Um, which has. Uh, I think the total of. Twenty-two conditions, something like that, um, twenty-three conditions. And I never did hear from the fire chief on any official comments, so we could probably eliminate number twenty-one and allow him to address that on his own with the applicant.
Yes, I, just to add, I, I did speak to the, uh, fire chief. I did, I believe, send an email with the planner attached. Ultimately, what he just wants is, um. For our head cultivator to sit down with him. Um, with a fire alarm plan so that it can be addressed and approved by the fire chief, uh, which we were gonna do anyways, so that he could have input.
Nick, could I interject one thing just really quickly? I want to make sure no one has the impression that there's been a change of ownership. Uh, the owner, the stated owner is a wholly owned subsidiary of DMA, so it's a single member.
Dave, the, the owner on the original, when we filed his application, it was still owned by Chase Mill Realty.
Got it, okay. That has changed.
I mean, just, just so the board does know, um, I know that the one individual who did come to the, um, town meeting, the, uh, public meeting last time. Uh, had some questions about the street lighting. He, he come back to us and, um, identified poles nine and ten. As the two poles that he would like to, uh, to have lights on. Um, I can tell you that the town did provide us with an invoice for the cost of that installation. Um, and I did drop off, um, with per DMA's request this morning at the town administrator's office. Um, the payment of that quote, so those lights will be installed on poles nine and ten, um, to illuminate that road as the, uh, butterhead requested. That's appreciated. I hope your butter appreciates it as well. Thank you. Bill, how should we proceed? Should I get comments from the board, um?
Well.
All, all the board members have had a chance to look at this. Do you guys have any further comments or questions you want to pose? Missing a couple of people on my screen here, so.
I can certainly scroll down if you have any comments on anything and if there are, I could probably make edits right on screen here so that. You know exactly what, uh, you're voting on tonight, if, if that's the way you go.
Well, since I don't see any planning board members raising hands right now, I'm gonna get, get the ball rolling. It is had a couple of general comments, um. For my apologies, some of the things I'm about to bring up, we probably didn't talk about at the last meeting. I wasn't, I wasn't aware that this was, this was a time thing that you guys were gonna request to have the decision made, uh, at that one meeting, so, um. Unfortunately, a couple of things that kind of came to mind as we're going over everything, I just wanted to bring up. The first one was, uh, power. It looks like the existing power to the building is all overhead wire. Leading into the building that you guys plan on upgrading the power. We spoke to, uh, National Grid. We will be pulling power from the, um, overhead lines that are across the street. Um, yeah. And generators on the, on the property. Um, do have enough power coming into it. Um, we may be upgrading those generators in the future, but we did speak to National Grid. Our power usage is available from, on the existing utilities. Um, we also, the plant also has, um, national gas lines coming from both ends. Um, so we will also be utilizing the natural gas aspect of this too. So the power, even the looking was outdated. You guys are gonna pull a, a, a new feed or is he just using the existing feed? Um, I believe that right now the, the plan with National Grid is use the existing feed of the overhead lights to the, uh. The structure into the generators that are there. Um, the generators may be changed. Um, that's a question that would have been able to answer, but unfortunately, um, he had a personal matter in Colorado, but. The, the power that we do need to utilize, um, we have spoken to National Grid and they did say that there is, uh, ample coming into the property. Yeah, I was assuming there's an ample power just because Ethan Allen was in there. I was just thinking about the age of the conductors and everything. That building's been there for a long time. I have no idea how old the equipment is, but it did not look fresh whenever I was out there. But I'm sure National Grid will help us with that one.
Absolutely.
Internal, the internal aspect inside the factory, um, has been updated by Mr. Kissner before the sale, so. Okay, good. The whole structure is, um, much, much newer than even when Ethan Allen was there.
And, and National Grid is going to be on site, uh, during construction, um, I'm sure. So if there is anything that needs to be done, we will definitely, uh, bring it to your attention. And they'll bring it to our attention as well, but as of right now, we just had this checked not too long ago.
Okay.
Everything is.
Yeah, I got some questions about sprinkler system as well, trying to figure out what the pressure was out there and everything, but then I started to go down this path and realize it's more a question for the building inspector. Whenever he's going with any kind of a building permit, so I'm gonna punt on those pretty much. I can tell you that the, uh, sprinkler heads have all been updated within the last, I think, two years. Yep. I was just more concerned about just water pressure itself is for this new use. If we have to put a pump or anything in, I wasn't sure what the. Any hydro flow tested been done recently, but again, that's all building inspector, really out of my jurisdiction. I did have, uh, questions about the water and sewer. We did get a note from our water and sewer department saying that, uh, the, the ten thousand gallons per day. Can be supplied, so I'm gonna pass on that one as well.
And to follow up on that, I did, uh, hear from the sewer superintendent.
Yep.
Who, uh, said that the sewer system there, uh, to the property is in good shape, so there's no issues there.
Excellent. Alright, so then, uh, another comment was ADA. Cause I drove through the area, there, I think it's supposed to be fifteen parking lot spots in front of the building. And then as you go past in front of the retail area, you kind of go up that hill a little bit towards the main street there. Uh, the whole entire entrance area looks like the grades and sloping is all off. Again, that's more of an issue for the building inspector whenever you guys would go to get your, um. Certificate of, of, um, occupancy, so I'm gonna punt on that one as well. I did have some concerns about that one stormwater drain, that was you leave the site to go up to whatever that, I think is Brandon Road. There's one manhole right there, kind of at the bottom of that incline. And it looks like it's starting to erode around it. It just, it looks like it needs to be cleaned. I know you guys weren't planning on doing anything to the site work in general. Is there any? Uh, plan to repair this? Or to get it better working order? It was listed as a condition on the special permit. Uh, was that just a catch basin? No, it's only catch basin I saw. It looks like everything else was sheet drainage to the river. Yeah, I believe that the catch basin was actually listed as a, uh, condition on the special permit. Oh, excellent, okay.
Yes, number twenty-two, Dan, I, um, I added that in.
Okay, didn't get it added in, yep.
It's, uh, right here, um, repair the catch basin and install signage, et cetera.
Alright, my last question was just clarity. Uh, we talked a lot about the, uh, new layout inside the building and everything. Are you guys planning on doing any exterior upgrades? The building? Yes. Well, the only, at this point, the only exterior upgrades to the, the actual building will be, um, we'll update the lighting around the building and, um. At that point, we'll likely bring back an illumination study too, so we can, uh, show. I know the chief listed in here, it's one of the conditions. That we use downcast lighting so that there's no, um, lighting goes over the property lines. Um, I think the only other exterior function that we may be utilizing is a, a fence around the property, which we had discussed in our previous meeting. Um, and potentially one exterior door being placed, um, next to the, uh, on the outside of the retail store. Um, as an entrance and exit. Um, I think that was laid on our floor plan. But besides that, um, we had talked to public hearing originally, um, with the town and with the town selectman. Um, we stayed that we were going to maintain the integrity of that, um, you know, that old mill building so that it fit into its, you know, current scope and. We weren't gonna touch that.
And, and we should, and we should say we're gonna maintain it enthusiastically because we think it's one of, it's a design feature that is distinctive. And something that we want to, we want to feature.
Okay. That kind of covers the gauntlet of mic questions. Any other planning board members have any questions or comments you'd like to add?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, number seventeen, before rebuilding the property, it would be cleaned of any remaining trash and debris, including land along the French River. And in our minutes, there was reference to Mr. Scanlon having, uh, reviewed a number of past. I guess, uh, looks at, if you will, or projects or potential projects with regards to utilizing some parts of the river for recreational purposes. Uh, kind of a unique situation in that we have another mill that is about to be, uh, reutilized, if you will, or repurposed. Not that far distant and, uh, it would be nice if somehow some portion of the French River, if you would, could be reclaimed. And it could be more of a benefit and a, a more of use rather to the citizens in the town of Dudley. I think in the last meeting, Mr. Wetroba had some fond thoughts in regards to kayaks. Uh, I don't know whether that might still be on the table, but it, given the fact that the two mills are as close as they are and the distance between them so short. I was hoping that there might be some opportunity for, again, enhancing, revitalizing that river and, uh. Getting something in terms of a recreational area established for the benefit of the community at large. I understand your concerns with regards to security and your need for a fence around the property. Uh, I'm not sure how that could be worked in conjunction with that thought, but, uh, if there's any possibility, I certainly would encourage that.
Yes, and you know what I'll do is I'll try to figure out who's representing the, um, developers going into the Stevens Mill area. And maybe we can work on a project together to address, you know, I know that, um, the town planner had provided us with. The historic mill rehab, rehab plan for two thousand and eight. Um, so I was going through that, but that is something certainly we can reach out to, um, individuals on that project and, you know, hopefully come to some resolution where we can bring it back to the town.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think the town will appreciate it in the future.
Thank you. Hey, any comments?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know how many members got a chance to read, uh, this Chase Mill study, but, uh, there's actually a section in there where they talked about. Uh, being able to use, uh, part of that property for recreational use and it turns out that there's a. A parcel that's referenced as parcel two that is located north of Brandon Road. And apparently that was, that went with that property, so my understanding is that you guys now own that parcel. And that would be the, the parcel that I think would be an idea, would be an ideal situation if. If we could maybe work something out with you guys, uh, and get that for recreational use for the town, because it's, it's on the other side of the road. My understanding is it's also got a lot of, uh, wetland that it wouldn't be anything you could develop as far as putting in kind of, uh. It would be very difficult to put any kind of structure on. But as far as for access, we might be able to get a grant to do something with that.
Well, I agree. So the internal conversations that we have had since we got this study was to try to potentially utilize that, uh, portion up the road. Um, because obviously that would be fenced off as part of this security feature that the CCC would require. So, um, I do think that that adjacent parcel on the other side of Hill Street, um, would be something that we could look at, um. In regards to this plan that we got from the town planner.
Absolutely. We're, we're going to be constructive on that, so.
Okay, great. I, I just wanted to get that, you know, get that out there now so that as we move forward, we can talk about that, keep that.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yes.
And I have no other, no other questions regarding tonight's.
Alright, alright, thanks Steve, Bill, a page, any of you? Any comments?
No, just to back up the recreational use. I don't think, I don't think the the Chase Mills is an ideal location for anything like that due to their security, but also across on, across Hill Street, you know, would be a better, better situation for that.
We are, we are having that also surveyed and getting the wetland features and everything for that, so we'll have all that information, but ultimately from the brief interaction we've had with our engineers at this point. It does look like it's predominantly wetland, so it would be a good utilization to support this plan.
Guy, do you have any, any input or comments or questions?
No, I I reviewed the the list, the list here that Bill put together and I thought it was very thorough and complete.
Excellent, alright, thank you. Alright, Bill, what's our next step?
I think, Dan, if, I guess we should ask the DMA folks, do they have any questions or concerns about the conditions in the decision or would like to offer any other suggestions?
We went, we went through them, ultimately, we've been trying to address the issues that were in the Graves letter and I did circulate that back to you, Bill. You know, we don't see anything in these conditions that would hamper our our goal of opening this project here in town, so we'll make sure that we meet all these criteria as we move forward and, you know, ultimately, we're going to you know, be working closely with this board and the selectmen moving forward, so we want to have an open dialogue moving forward and anybody on the board or the town planner can certainly reach out to us at any point. We'll keep you updated as we, you know, continue moving along with the construction.
Excellent. Does that mean we're looking for a motion there, Bill?
I believe so unless there are no other comments.
Yes, so if the planning board is good with the draft decision, we can entertain a motion to remove the draft status and make it an official document.
Chairman, I would so move.
It works for me for emotions, Bill, any issues?
I think we could do a little bit better than that, but.
I thought you'd appreciate an economy of words there. How would you like that, I mean, how, they say here listed on the agenda says review draft special permit and major plan, major site plan approval. Are we saying then that the motion should read, we approved the major site plan as presented or as as discussed this evening or as amended this evening?
Yeah, I don't think we made, well, yeah, I, I deleted that condition from the fire chief. So you could say, you know, the decision as amended this evening.
Okay, and that would be the motion then, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, I have a motion to accept the draft decision as amended tonight. Do I have a second? Second? And I have a second, alright. Who made the second?
Guy, Guy was the second.
Alright, thank you, yeah, I'm not getting everybody, everybody's picture on the side here, so it's kind of hard to see some things there. Alright, so we'll go through a roll call vote, Richard.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Guy.
Hi.
Myself, also an I, so unanimous. Alright, thank you, Bill, for your hard work and putting all this together.
Sure.
And thank you group for working with us and keeping things moving.
Absolutely, and we thank you as well for just a very good relationship that we look forward to extending in the future.
So Merry Christmas and a happy prosperous New Year to all.
Our town planner has a comment, Bill.
Yeah, Nick, before you go, as you know, town hall is closing up, so what I will do is pin up this decision and leave it in the police lobby. And ask the planning board members to come down and sign it. And then when we get all five signatures, I'll let you know, you can come and pick it up and then I'll take it down to the registry to record it.
Perfect, and I already have the envelopes ready to send out the the notices. My my understanding is I don't record until after the 20 days is run with the clerk's office, correct?
That's correct, so, yeah, thank you, we'll file with the town clerk and then after the 20 day fill period, you can record it.
Perfect, and I'll give all the butters notice once it's filed with the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you and have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too. Alright, give me a second to pull up the agenda here for tonight. Alright, that takes care of our new business, moving on to our standard business. Bill, there be any updates to any of the local subdivisions that we are working on?
On D Country View Estates Eisenhower Drive. I have a verbal commitment from Mr. Haney to cost share on the repair of the sewer pumps at the pump station. The sewer superintendent signed the agreement and I sent it over to Mr. Haney. Also, I'm waiting to get his signature back. At that point, then we'll be able to go ahead and we repair and or replace the pumps there and a part of the agreement is that the sewer department would be responsible for any other work in the station such as putting in a rail system or stairs into the, into the pit, so I think we have, it's like we were finally getting close to getting that work done.
Okay.
For Tobin Farm, Mr. Slingo came in the other day and he he dropped off his Mylar Street Acceptance Plan and the six copies that we require. So I think we're looking good there, I do have a letter from the former highway superintendent, Vinnie Paletta. That he's satisfied with that the subdivision has been completed satisfactorily. So I think I will get to you the planning board sign off form. You might want to take a drive down there to see if you have any questions or concerns about it before the next meeting.
Yeah, I was going to recommend that, I know that one of the items that we were talking about, there are two, I don't know what I call them, causeways, small causeways, go over to wetland area that didn't have sufficient
Guardrails.
Guardrails along it, exactly, so I don't know exactly how those have been repaired, the board has a chance, maybe everybody can drive, drive past on their own time, take a look at it in case there are any questions before our next meeting.
Okay, great. So I'm expecting then for town meeting to have Tobin Farm. I think when I spoke with Mr. Haney, he was interested in getting Country View brought forth as well, so we may have that one. I had sent the information to Tony Secaro for Pierpont. We may have that one up for acceptance and possibly Piasta Road, I had sent the developer the the information a couple of months ago, but I haven't heard anything back on that one, so that may or may not come forward. So we could have three or possibly four of these subdivision streets up for acceptance by town meeting this at the annual.
That's excellent news. Alright. Alright, we're going over lines, so the next item number two, inspections and actions associated with site plans. Anything there for us?
I've been working on a form of active projects. Let me see if I can bring that up to just sort of update you on things, I don't have anything really current to report, but I was just trying to gather information on the current status of things, just so that you would know where we stand, if you give me a second.
Alright.
So this is really kind of a draft, I haven't completed it yet, but just trying to get a handle on what's before the board. The Sep Solar project. I had an email from Mr. Christie saying that the project, the site is in the process of sale and should begin in the spring of 2021. The board approved it in about two years ago, so it's got about a year to get that underway. I don't know whether he'll be able to finish it in it by the deadline, if not, you may need to grant an extension. The Dudley Estates project was approved in in 2018. Had two years with a footnote, two years from the date of the recording of the definitive plan, which was recorded in May of 2019, so that would expire in May of 2021.
Was that off of Jesse Road?
Yes.
Okay.
So that has not yet begun, an email from Ben Asgood saying the project may start soon, that's kind of vague, but that's all the information I have. Lions Estates you're aware of, Country View you're aware of. Piasta Road is, as I mentioned, may or may not come forward, I I think the work is basically done. We would certainly need to get Graves Engineering out there to review to see if, you know, if there's any punchless items that need to be completed. Legacy landing. Granted, the special permit. There's some confusion here, at least on my part, and I spoke with with the developer on this project as well, but the decision says that once the special permit is issued, which it was, they need to come back for definitive plan approval for the roadway. But it kind of looked like the planning board approved that already, so my conversation with the engineer was that he wanted to come back to the board to discuss that condition.
Where's Legacy Landing at?
By Airport Road.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
Good point, I could add a location field there too, so we know what we're talking about. So so I think maybe in January, he'll come back to the board. Nothing has happened there yet.
That's still on the market too, isn't it?
Yes. Still assigned in front of the property, yeah.
Correct, yeah. JD and D, as you know, unfortunately, David Ochoaki passed away in a car accident, so I haven't heard anything on that, I assume that's gonna take a while to sort out. 263 West Main Street Parking Lot.
Excuse me, Bill?
Yes, Steve.
JD and D, is that, is that supposed to be 2021?
Correct, yeah, 2022 probably.
Well, that's wrong.
We did, yes, thank you. The West Main Street Parking Lot, from Peter Bannister, don't have any information on that. He needs to get approval of the Conservation Commission in any case before he could go forward, so I suspect that's on hold. Pierpont, I think you're pretty much up to date on Rocky Hill. I reached out to Eva, forget her last name, but she's the niece of the Chonakis, but I never heard back from her, so I assume that they're not going to go forward with trying to get it accepted. This year, you may recall, they came to a planning board meeting and, you know, there's some litigation going on there, and I think they want to try to sort that out first. The Amp Solar project is the one out in in West Dudley. We've had an issue with one of the neighbors, some drainage issues on on neighboring property. Lawrence Cook from the company is trying to get his engineer to design a solution for that, which would involve some kind of a perimeter drain or trench drain of some sort to carry the the drainage away from the house. And I, I was hoping that would have been resolved while we for now, so that's kind of dragging out, but I haven't forgotten about it and I'm still trying to get the applicant to to work on it. Cell Tower, yes.
There's a quick question on Rocky Hill Estates, because I see those aren't filled in. I'm just curious, what was, do you know what the date of approval was on that?
It was sometime in, I think, 8060.
Okay, so have they been asking for extensions that have been granted, or has that, is that expired?
Well, I haven't really had a chance to get into it, Steve, it's a very complicated one, I've been trying to avoid that until I get the other ones figured out, but
Okay, alright.
That's a good question and I I do intend to work on it.
Because I remember we had a discussion a couple of meetings ago, that we were all kind of surprised at like that a lot of these had been situations where developers should have come forward and asked for extensions and never did, and we kind of wondered about, well, what does that actually do to the whole process?
Exactly, I did send a request to Tony Secaro for Pierpont. I sent him a draft extension request form, but he hasn't completed it yet, so I'll follow up with him and try to get that for the next meeting, so we can get, at least get that one back on track. The Cell Tower and the Congregational Church. I don't have any new information, I, last I heard, was under construction, I, I think it might be.
That is completed, it looks to be as the extension is, and I believe added to the structure. From what I can observe from the street.
Good.
I don't, I don't count that as good, but there's something else that's there now that wasn't there before.
It's the clock, is that why you have the top cut off in your picture behind you?
No, I stole that from the town website and the town.
Oh, okay.
You know, and I have to appreciate the town's photographer in terms of having dropped that independent of any action I might have taken.
And these, these last ones, I haven't had a chance to get to, you know about Misty Meadows. Kind of just sort of sitting around with the road deteriorating and how much we can do about it. So I'll try to to fill out the rest of the form for the next meeting, but, so that's what I've been looking at.
Last three right there. Perryville Farm, I thought that was completed.
I, I believe they might have been. These, these still have escrow monies sitting in accounts. So that's why they're here, if I find out that they've actually been completed, I'll I'll bring back you know, the the request to close out the account to you, so I've been working on that.
Algo, is that a reference to Tobin Farms?
No, I don't think so, I think they did another project somewhere, Steve, that's just the the name in the escrow portion of the budget, so I'll have to get some more information on that.
Okay, alright, that's all looking good so far.
Yeah, slowly making progress on trying to wrap these up.
Anything on the planner's plate to discuss?
A couple of things. I don't know if you've been, had a chance to drive through the town hall, but the kiosk has been set up in the west entrance, the second floor entrance. Town Hall closes to the public at the end of the week and anybody who needs assistance from the town hall will get it at the kiosk rather than entering the building.
Yep.
We still have the police lobby option. For example, signing of forms by you folks. But if you need anything else, I could meet with you by appointment or we could arrange for pickup of something of that sort at the kiosk, but that's going into operation next week. On the complete streets, I'm still waiting for Mast D O T to sign the contract. So that project will get underway when that happens. I had an email from them saying that they thought it was ready to go. But I haven't got the official word yet, so hopefully that will be very soon.
Okay.
There's a new grant program that's come out that the Economic Development Commission is very interested in. It's called the Local Rapid Response Plan Program. And they've asked for my assistance to help fill out that application, which is due next week. So it's kind of a late announcement and it's going to be a very rushed kind of application. I don't know yet what they want to do, but when they come up with their their objective, then I'll certainly work with them and help them fill out that that form and and get it in by the end of next week.
Excuse me, Bill, if I may, when you say they, is that the Board of Selectmen that you mentioned again?
The EDC.
EDC, okay.
Yes.
Because I think that grant is intended for small businesses more specifically than perhaps some others, is that, is that correct?
It's kind of more of a village downtown focus
Yeah.
And a program dealing with response to issues that have been brought up by COVID. So, but it also has a pretty wide range of activities that are available for communities. So I think it could be very helpful to the town, it's just a matter of zeroing in on one particular idea. zeroing in on one particular idea and advancing that into the application process. And, uh, the last point on the planner's plate is that the, uh, Brandon Jericho Infrastructure Plan is moving forward. Um, we have a draft report of the first couple of sections. I've done a tremendous amount of work, uh, very pleased with the engineering analysis that's been done. Uh, what, what we haven't seen yet is there, you know, high priority recommendations. I suspect that will be coming in in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then I can certainly circulate that plan to you so you can get a sense of what, what that's all about. And, um, so that's, that I think is going to be very helpful for future grant applications by identifying all the deficiencies in those neighborhoods and coming up with solutions uh, for the drainage and the, uh, the water and sewer mains. It's somewhat discouraging, just the, the amount of work that needs to be done overall and the condition of utilities in that area. Uh, those facilities are quite old and many of them are deteriorating. So it's going to be quite a, uh, a long-term project to, to, uh, bring those utilities up to speed and, and, uh, prevent, uh, you know, line breaks and things of that sort. That's all I had, Dan, on the planner's plate.
Okay, thank you. Actually a lot going on. Any comments from the planning board?
I'll start us off. If I may, uh, Bill, thank you very much for your persistence with regards to Country View Estates. I know that you were the front man there in terms of the contact with Mr. Haney and that much of that communication did not come easily. Uh, applaud you for your effort and, uh, your diligence in terms of following through on that.
Thank you.
And, uh, just one thought, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'd like to include in that our, uh, former member, Mr. Perrin, who's now enjoying life in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Uh, Don Johnson, who's hopefully still in recovery or have completed his recovery. And our former clerk, uh, Carol Savard.
Alright, well said. Any other comments? We're all good. Can we adjourn Bill or is there anything else that we need to discuss?
Uh, just, uh, under other business, Dan, we're not going to have a second meeting in December. I don't believe, I don't, we don't have much going on. So we'll meet.
Plus the holidays are there, yeah.
Right, on January thirteenth. I do have, um, one invoice that I'll pull up. I've, I'm requesting this for the planning office. Uh, it's called the Handbook of Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law. It's a rather expensive book. It's four hundred fifty-five dollars, but it's, uh, it's a great resource in terms of uh, case law of all the planning and subdivision work that, that not only the planning office does, but the building commissioner has to obviously make decisions on a lot of non-conforming lot situations and, and approving, you know, building permit applications as far as zoning compliance goes. So I think it'll be a great resource for the office. Uh, every week, something comes up where we're sort of scratching our heads trying to figure out if applicants, applicants can do this or that. So um, I'd like to order this book and I think that will help us, uh, make better decisions as we go forward.
That's from the Netherlands, Bill.
Excuse me?
It's from the Netherlands.
I know, I was surprised. Mark Bobrowski, uh, was a very well-known land use attorney here in Massachusetts.
Sure, that's dollars and not euros, right?
That is dollars, I believe. I'm sure they have some sort of, uh, American office where we actually get it from, but that's their home address.
Way around for Massachusetts, uh, Land Use and Planning Law, but so be it. We did a motion to approve that?
I think so. It'd be a good idea.
I would like to make a motion that we approve, and I forget the name of the document, but, uh, that presented by Bill just a minute ago.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Bill. Alright, big roll call vote, Richard?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And Guy?
Aye.
And myself, also an aye, unanimous.
Both those clovers are going to have a good Merry Christmas, I guess.
And how's looking for adjournment now, Bill?
I'm good.
Alright.
Do you mind, uh, make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Call this one or is everybody yelling unison?
Alright.
We all yelled in unison. It's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good Christmas.
Holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.